Nothing tomorrow.
Yeah.
If I can ask, in case someone didn't hear, cell phones, silence them, please. And if we could rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good morning, everyone. Happy New Year. Okay, we have minutes of our selectmen's meeting Wednesday, December 18th at 10 o'clock. Do I have a motion to accept those?
I'll make a motion.
In a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none. Power of sequence, right off the bat, I'm out of sequence. Then we have minutes of a non-public meeting held on Wednesday, December 18th. Could I have a motion to accept those?
I'll make the motion.
In a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Hearing any opposition? We can sign that. Now, I'm a little out of sequence, sorry, but we also have minutes of our selectmen's meeting held on December 4th at 10.
Those are not a motion. Those are only ones that weren't signed.
We already did that last time.
Isn't that what was in the purple folder? No, that was in the purple folder.
We just signed it.
Yeah, we have two copies.
Yeah, we already signed that somewhere.
It's in the purple folder, right there on top. Sunny has it.
Yeah, right there. Oh, we've got a extra copy. Go for it. Well, better to me, yeah, last time we didn't have enough. All right, okay. We're going to open our meeting with new business, well for construction phase bid amendment.
Yes, at our last meeting, you guys had voted to approve the well for construction phase bid to PRB Construction. As we were having that meeting, the contractor realized he was bidding on a few different projects at one time and missed the electrical component of it, the quote. So the, what was missed out of his quote was forty-two thousand five hundred. After we got back from our meeting, we had a discussion about that, and due to his error, he's going to reduce that forty-two five down by seven thousand five hundred, bringing his new total to two-hundred-and-ninety thousand. It is still under the other bidders anyway, and then you also, to make full use of the ARPA funds, voted for the total of the three-twenty-five, so there really is no new motion. I'm just advising you of that new change in the amendments. We have signed the full contract already, so after you give the blessing verbally, then I can go back and sign the amendment of adding in the
Seven thousand.
The electrical component of the forty-two minus seven-five.
Minus seven. All right, so you want a motion to to change the, well, it's still below the full bid, though.
Yes, yes.
Okay. So I guess, I guess, I'll make a motion that we allow the electrical component to be added into the bid, even though it, as amendment, as amended, even though it's still below, he's still the low bidder.
Yes.
Travis, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Okay. Twenty-twenty-five zoning petition warrant article.
Yes, in your packet. I have provided you with the one zoning petition warrant article. I will have Karen, if she wants to address it. Really, there's really nothing the board needs to do. I provided you as it is written. The petition warrant article reads to see if the town of Belmont would vote to allow manufactured homes in the town on their own land. The planning board met last night and voted three-one-one to not support as written.
Did they say why, what the written part is they don't support about it?
The primary reason that they did support it as written, there's two issues. It doesn't restrict it to the residential zones and the way they order it, so it would be allowed in any zone. There's also the definition of manufactured home has restrictions to, that they can only be in manufactured home parks and manufactured home subdivisions, so if it passes, it would, it would be a moot point because it would butt heads with that other piece of language. So they just, the concept, they, they weren't opposed to the concept, but just the way it was written, it was too
Too vague.
Too vague.
Makes sense.
Because you could literally put it right there.
Yeah, that makes sense.
And it could be any age or the age that we allow.
The age restriction in the, in the current ordinance is nineteen-eighty-five, which is a forty-year-old unit.
I was just going to say, so they could bring in a single wide sixty, like they, people buy to use this camp somewhere out in the woods or something. Got it, okay, all right. And then there's another one, a separate warrant article?
Yeah, that's number C.
Oh, okay, got it, okay. So that's the only
That was the only petition zoning warrant article that came through. The planning board does have their own two separate zoning articles, but as far as the petition, I just wanted to advise you guys of those two. Or that one.
So that came through as a petition?
It was a petition warrant, yes.
Oh, interesting, okay, all right. Separate warrant article, fire department request for two firefighters.
Yes, at your last meeting, the fire chief had approached the board to consider putting a separate warrant article on the ballot to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one-hundred-and-ninety-three thousand, three-hundred-and-ninety-one dollars for salary benefits to hire two full-time firefighters. The board agreed to put it on the ballot as not supported financially, as well as the budget committee will do the same. So it will read, this article is not recommended by the board's selectmen, this article is not recommended by the budget committee.
Now, in prior years, didn't we put the vote count on there?
No, but we can.
I didn't, I thought we did in prior years, that's why I was asking.
It's why, no.
He's asking about the
No, I know what he said, but I didn't hear what she just said.
No, we haven't.
I didn't say anything. Could we?
Yeah.
Just because it was a divided vote anyways, at least it shows that it was supported by a minority.
Yeah, and then I just to remind everyone that even if it did pass, it doesn't make the board have to spend the funds. So if you get into a default, if you have a new board and you decide, just because it passed doesn't mean you have to spend the funds. The, the town can only tell you, you can spend the money, does it say you have to spend the money or where you spend the money?
I was surprised about that. I thought that once the voters, but it is not.
No, the legislative body just deals with finances, we deal with oversight.
Right, so even if it was to pass, it doesn't necessarily mean that those funds will get spent or that these people can be hired.
Correct, and the department will have to come to you anyways before they hire, make any offers to hire.
Yeah.
Because you need the authority to spend the funds. And, you know, I would think that if we got into a situation where other warrant articles also weren't approved or we run into a default, it would be
If we run into a default, we're going to write, write.
It would be a consideration, whether you move forward with supporting that financially or not.
Sure, sure, interesting, okay. Elderly and disability exemption increase proposal.
Yes, selectmen and Hachimki have reached out to me because she wanted to get on the agenda to discuss the possibility of the board considering increasing the amount for elderly and disability. And I believe she has an issue with a handout that she's going to discuss.
So I spent a lot of time on this. I got this idea a couple of years ago. When my uncle Roger passed, he lived in the town of Northfield and helping my aunt Sharon get some of her affairs in order after he passed. They had just done a petition article to do an increase on the elderly and the disabled exemption in the town of Northfield. And given the fact of the increase in our economy, the increase in our assessments, the increases in our appraisals, do care to and stuff, which is causing the property taxes to rise. I did a research to try to find out when the last time the town of Belmont had, had looked at these or changed them. And I could find a record of when that was done last.
No, we did this just a few years ago.
It's been brought up for consideration.
Is that what it was?
To have it moved on now.
Okay, and I think we hadn't, because we were in line with the surrounding towns at that point, okay. I know we had discussed it, so.
So I did average one of these. So in the top half is the towns and the exemptions that, for the towns of Belmont County. So we're above average as far as Belmont County goes. Gillington is the only one that's mostly higher than us. But this makes Gillington and Northfield both towns that touch the town of Belmont on property lines that have done the increases. And then I pulled from DRA a whole spreadsheet of all two-hundred-and-fifty-eight towns in St. Minersia and kind of tried to look at what other towns are doing. I used Atkinson, Bowe, and Brooklyn mainly in the decisions that I made and the numbers I picked because their total valuations were similar to ours. Their population is similar to ours. Their ratios through DRA. Brooklyn, I mean, Bowes isn't similar, it's lower, but as far as all the other numbers, they're kind of lined up. So these are the ones that I used. Atkinson, Bowe, and Brooklyn. I have Lee on here because I wanted to show Lee has half the valuation that we have. And their numbers are significantly higher than the ones I had proposed.
Discussion?
Give me a second.
That's okay, that's okay. Yes, I'm sorry, oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay, next week.
Yes.
Paula Ackerman, assessing administrator. I do all of the applications and things for exemptions and credits. So one of the questions that I would have is, what is the goal for the changes? I don't have what you proposed. Is the goal to increase the dollar amount of the exemption for people who currently qualify? Or is the goal to increase the number of applicants that we can provide assistance to?
So my goal is to increase the exemptions, to slightly increase the income guidelines, and to increase the asset limits. The goal is to help as many people stay in their homes as we can. And I also did, I did that for each age bracket, and then the disability exemption has its own numbers.
So I have a quick question, sorry.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
How did you come up with your exemption amounts under four, like A, B, C, and? Like, how'd you get, come up with your recommendations?
Well, it says recommend, that's just what I recommended. I tried to pick numbers that I thought were kind of fair and not overboard. And then it's like I said, like, I use these three towns. So I have for age sixty-five to seventy-four, one-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand exemption. Atkinson does one-hundred-and-fifty, Bowe does one-twenty-two, Brooklyn does one-twenty, Henneker does one-thirty, Lee does two-hundred-and-seventeen. So I tried to just be helpful, but being mindful of the burden that spreads in other directions.
I, I agree with definitely moving the income probably up, maybe the asset limitations. The exemption amounts are a little high on your recommended side, I think, because it just downshifts onto the working class, too, which hurts then the working class homeowners.
Obviously, what happens with this, and correct me if I'm wrong, and I'm not opposed to this, I'm just asking questions.
Sure.
Is that this then throws more tax burden on the people who are not on this, and what is that amount? Do we have any idea? I mean, what, what is this?
Well, it absolutely will, but kind of thinking of it this way. The target area for this is people who are sixty-five and older.
Sure.
People who are retirement, on pensions, right? So these people are still paying the burden of having to pay for the school portion when they're doing this. So it's kind of helping to offset for them, you know? I understand it might be a little bit more of a burden over here, but if it keeps these people in their homes and not homeless, then it's just really something that should be done for them.
What was I just going to ask?
Sure, absolutely.
Someone else just asked, going to ask you.
You got Colleen, if you want.
Oh, go ahead, go. Gives me a chance to think what I was going to ask.
So I, I've been thinking about this since I saw on the agenda. And I think there's a bunch of research that needs to be done with weighing out the income requirements and the exemption values to make sure that they're not off kilter. And to also, when you look at
Jesus.
We're going to blow away here.
Um, when you look at the exemption amounts and the income amounts for all of the other Belmont County, you know, and I understand we should also look at surrounding towns that are in other counties as well. But when I just quickly pulled some information, I pulled for, for Belmont County, and the elderly exemption ranges from fifteen thousand dollars to eighty thousand dollars for all of the other communities from DRA for twenty-twenty-three. I did not see that any community except Laconia had made a change to their values in twenty-twenty-four. That was just a little bit of research.
So this would put us way, way, way out of sync with using these figures that were recommended.
Right, so Guilford's exemption amount is forty-five thousand. Laconia is now at sixty thousand, and Meredith is at fifty thousand, and Tilton is at fifty thousand. Gillington is at the eighty thousand. And then, like, Center Harbor is fifteen thousand, Armstead's thirty thousand, Alton is forty thousand. So I would recommend as the assessing administrator that there's be some research and some potential scenarios run with different numbers and how that, you know, and also Alicia and I talked a little bit about, you know, are there a lot of people who are being denied because of their income level?
When you look at their income level, is it a lot like, I just remember having rental assistant apartments, so it's been a few years, but when you're looking at their income level, you're not looking at, let's just say, the little lady that's got a couple hundred thousand dollars in her savings account, you're looking at the interest income from that, correct?
No, you look at both.
You look at both.
Yeah, probably the asset, asset limitation.
So the asset limit is well. So like, the asset limit is a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
It does not prove the value of your home unless you have what they call excess acreage. If you have like twenty acres, then that would be considered, you know, an asset.
All right, so you are looking at all assets.
And it's an asset count, that's the cash value of a life insurance policy.
Oh, wow.
All of those things
Is part of?
Are part of the assets.
Okay, all right, okay.
You know, and maybe that's a place where some things, you know, need to be adjusted is, is on the assets end as well. I'm sorry, I haven't seen more, if you have assets.
And that one was hard one to do because you're trying to take into consideration just a trip to the grocery store. A dozen eggs is six dollars, you know, so we're spending way, way more money. And she's counting cars, he counts burial plots if nobody is in them. You know, it used to be, ten years ago, your car would be worth fifteen, twenty thousand. You know, but if you have a husband and wife and he has a pickup truck, chances are that pickup truck's value, you know, even at five to six years old, is fifty, sixty thousand dollars. That's taking almost half of your assets now for rental vehicles.
All right, yeah, I, I think you're right. You know, if the little lady has fifty thousand dollars sitting in her check, in her savings account and you're taking that away, so to speak, that to me is a little much, okay. Yeah.
How, sorry.
So go ahead, go ahead.
How, how hard would it be work-wise to run numbers to see if we were to accept certain different exemption amounts? It would impact the taxpayers.
I mean, it's just going to be like multiplication of how many people do we have in each category? If we bump the category to this, I would also like to pull the last couple of years of denial paperwork to see who did we officially deny. But I do know from people coming into the office that, you know, a lot of times I will have, like, the married people in particular, like the, the difference between a, an income limit for a single person compared to a married person is only ten thousand dollars, which is not very much money for a second person, especially with the way that the economy is now. So I've had a lot of people that have walked in, they're like, you know, we're just, we're only five thousand dollars over this income limit, so we're not going to qualify. I mean, I've had some that have been as little as a thousand dollars over that said, I'm just not going to qualify.
Definitely, in my mind, you should be true of the tax bracket, they just double it if it's two people. Like, that's what tax brackets do, I don't know why we don't do it that way.
I, I think part of that, too, though, with like ownership of a home and like, when you've got two people, your heat bill is probably the same, or your electric bill probably is the same.
No, I mean, for in, for income wise, oh, I see what you're saying, yeah.
You know, like, your expenses aren't as much for two separate households as it is for two people living in the same household.
Yeah, I see that.
The other thing is that right now, the town of Belmont counts assistance that people receive as income. If they get electrical assistance, if they get fuel assistance.
Oh, heat, fuel assistance and that type of thing.
SNAP benefits, those are counted. And I was at a conference in December, and the lady that I spoke with who did the conference, she said that, she hasn't sent me the information yet, but she said that there are ways for the town to adopt whether or not they want to include those as part of the income or not. Because sometimes that's what sends someone over the edge is the event, you know, they're getting twelve hundred dollars in fuel assistance and, you know, it puts them
It's income, it's considered income because it's
It's considered income.
Yeah. I'm not against adjusting this by any means, okay, but I think my thought would be to give Colleen a chance, whether she reaches out to Sharon, however, just because she needs a little bit more work to do. But I think it would be behoove us to at least give Colleen a chance to digest this and maybe work on some recommendations.
Yeah, I'd definitely like to see it ran against like Gillington's exemption limits, because I mean, they're the highest in the county, if we can run it against there, see what that comes up to.
It's really not, it's like using Guilford or using, I mean, Guilford or Northfield. I mean, they have their numbers, those, they, Guilford didn't do it, but I mean, and they have the numbers and their numbers are what their numbers are. But the ones that I used to outline, they have a similar population, they have a similar tax base, they have a similar evaluation.
The first thing that comes to my mind, though, when, with those three towns that you used, and it just, the first thing that came to my mind, they're all down south.
And they're very wealthy towns.
And they're wealthy towns, okay? Not that, not that we're not, I think we're gonna at some point be hopefully one of those wealthy towns, but that was my first thought right off the bat, that came to my brain, but that's only me, I mean, it just
Yeah, because like Atkinson, their population growth is two-hundred-and-sixty-five people in three years. So it's kind of tracking that way as well.
Yeah, I definitely think we can, we can do some work on them, I just don't, I just worry about how much we downshift onto the working middle class, and then we out, then we outtax the working middle class, and we're really going to be hurting two branches of our group, our population.
Right, not, not just the, yeah.
And as far as the disability one, because it's a separate thing, I had requested that moving the exemption up so it lines up with the sixty-four to seventy-five. And that all income guidelines and asset limits be the same all the way across the board, so that they're not different. Because I know a person who had some confusion with the asset limits. They thought that they were the same for the disabled and the elderly, and they actually weren't. The one for someone who's disabled is actually a hundred thousand dollars right now. So I was just trying to line those up so that it would just be one flat across the board.
All right.
I will also add, Colleen found this, that in the twenty-twenty-five session, there is a proposed House Bill one-oh-one. I'll just read what the proposal is. This is for, so an elderly homeowner exemption based on assessed value for qualified taxpayers shall be granted for a different dollar amount determined by the town, so the sum is open-ended, for a person seventy, seventy-two years of, or older. And to qualify, they must have been a Hampshire resident for ten consecutive years and have owned the real estate individually or jointly for two consecutive years. In addition, the value of exemption, of exemption, a qualified taxpayer is eligible or shall not exceed five-hundred-and-thirty. So it's a, it's another exemption that is being put out there to be voted on that we may adopt if we wish, if it passes next year, so.
You said that's House Bill one-oh-one?
House Bill one-oh-one.
They'll probably get, um
I'm going to see who sponsored it, probably if it's even got passed or not. I'm going to check who sponsored it first.
Yeah, yeah.
So like, no, if it even gets passed.
Belcher, Moffitt.
Oh, okay, those are Republicans, it might pass. Wow, okay. It might actually pass then.
I'm looking for the names, but
No, they're good, that, that, you did actually pretty good.
All right, can we, I guess, it's a, go ahead.
I'm willing to have those conversations to crash with Colleen if she's willing to help me with that. However, I do have a petition for it. I mean, petitions have to be filed by Friday at four p.m., correct?
They open Friday, I thought, about the fourteenth, yeah, the fourteenth. I posted up last night.
My next thing, whether, if you don't support it, then for other means is a petition, but petitions, the last day to submit is the fourteenth. So it is next Tuesday.
Well, I mean, in the recommendation, I can't, the exemption part of it, it's way, way high, way. I wouldn't be able to support that by any means.
And how often, and how often can we revisit this every year, right?
Yeah.
But can't we revisit it as a board during, can't
No, if the voters would
Have to decide.
Voters need to vote.
I thought the board was able to decide.
I thought that we did that, are you sure?
I thought the board set the individual amounts. That I guess would be something else to check on.
Yeah, because then there would be no need for petitions.
Right, I thought that we changed the last
Oh, petitions, so even if it's not binding, you still get a poll of the public.
Well, you still, there, there must be, it must have to go to the voters, because we even have to put the
These are articles, yeah, because there's RSA's.
Oh, right.
These articles that I, that I used, because in the packet I gave you, the last page is kind of, that's what that is, is what the art, how the article would be mostly, I borrowed it from Gillington, so it can probably be pared down a little bit more, but
So I, I have the information, you know, within a few numbers of how many people are receiving each type of exemption and currently what those exemption amounts are. So for the disabled, right now, we have sixteen people that are receiving a disability exemption. For the, the low end of sixty-five to seventy-four elderly, we have eighteen people. For the s- the low end, the sixty five to seventy four elderly, we have eighteen people. For the, um, the next, the.
Seventy five to seventy, yeah?
Yep, we have fourteen people, and then we have twenty five people that are at the highest level of the elderly exemption.
But again, we have no way of knowing if this is increased with her recommendations, um, it could go to.
But even just at the twenty five, at the high end, twenty five, you're adding a hundred thousand dollars on the exemption, that's two hundred and fifty thousand.
So if there were sixteen in the amount.
I mean, we have no idea, it could go to, I don't know, pick a number, I guess.
That's two point five million.
So the exemptions must be adopted by a municipality at annual meeting.
Okay.
One of those permanently disableds that we have right now is over a million dollar exemption because it's for a house for the disabled annually. Um, I should've broken that number down a little bit more, um, let's see, the next one.
So it basically reduces the the value of your amount.
Yeah, but then someone, the other end has to be, the what's it we do has to be picked up, so that's why my only concern is if, I mean, I have the Gillington amounts for the exemptions for, that I think would be good for the first year, and then see how it impacts the lower brackets of homeowners, the ones that don't qualify, but then have to pick up the burden of it.
So you're, I'm sorry, you're recommending to just change the income amount?
No, well, I'm saying, I'm saying, even with the income, uh, changing, taking her recommendations of the income amounts, the asset limit, and then on the exemptions, using the Gillington exemptions, which is what, eighty, hundred, and a hundred and twenty? Rather than the hundred and twenty five, one seventy five, two twenty five, for the, at least for a year, so we can see how much of an impact it would have.
So the income limits for other municipalities in.
Yeah, it's definitely lower than what we have here.
Now, probably are, they are similar to what we offer for income limits, none. So the highest income limit for a single person, um, is thirty thousand dollars in New Hampton and Barnstead.
Gillington.
But now remember, Barnstead also has a very low exemption amount. So their income limit is thirty thousand, but their exemption is only thirty thousand, whereas Belmont has an income limit of twenty five thousand and an exemption value of sixty five thousand.
But even Gillington has a single income of thirty and a married of forty five.
Yes, and and they're, um.
But they have a lower single asset.
Yes, um, but like La Conia is twenty five and thirty five, they're the same as ours, and their elderly exemptions are sixty thousand, seventy five thousand, and ninety five thousand. So their income limits are the same as ours, but their exemption amounts are a little bit larger.
Which is, which they should be, because it's a city. I always think of it, La Conia is a city, it's not a town.
Well, they have more commercial, they can pull from.
They're more commercial and more, right.
That's my only concern, is we don't have a lot of commercial industrial to hurt, rather than hurting the single homeowner.
Right.
Increase, yeah.
Okay.
But I don't believe that they increase the income, they only increase the exemption amount. So it, it there, all the numbers are are fairly close. Um, the highest married income amount is forty five thousand dollars, and again, that's in Barnstead where they have very low exemption amounts. So they've increased the, they've increased the income to encompass more applicants that are able to qualify, but each applicant is getting a lower exemption amount because you're adding more people.
Where we're, where we're significantly with this, we're not only increasing the income, but we're really increasing the exemption with this. So we're potentially.
Right, like one or two.
Going above and beyond.
Well, looking at it this way, uh, and I'll throw myself under the bus with this one, not last year, but the year before, the property taxes are, at the assessment of the property taxes on my house doubled, okay? And then.
That was statewide, I mean, it's not just Belmont that did that, unfortunately.
Right, but let, no, but think of it this way, because this is just me, that you have a whole demographic of population that this happened to. And so the social security increase for this year was two point five percent. So my tax bill goes up fifty percent, but my income only went up two point five percent. Last year it was two point one, and the year before that it was a little more, but it was a COVID thing.
So I guess, so, but the problem is, okay, we still have to have a certain amount of money to run the town. No, no ifs, and or buts, or we start compromising, we start laying people off, we start not doing, providing services or whatever, you know, it's a balancing act, but we don't know, you can't tell me these exemptions, okay? We know what we're, what we are offering at this point, but with this high of an increase in the exemptions, you can't tell me how much is that gonna increase? So is it gonna increase by fifty people, is it gonna increase by five hundred people, we don't know.
So I'm, I like doing very small steps, cuz that's how you conceive the impact that's gonna happen. What do you think would be a better goal for the first year, getting more people into the program or raising the exemptions into the program? Like, what do you think will help more people?
Raising the exemptions.
I mean, so why don't we try to raise our exemptions this year, rather than raising the exemptions and the income limits and seeing how that could impact?
Well, I, I did it as a blanket, because I I researched town reports all the way back to two thousand and seven to try to find if any of these were ever adjusted, and I didn't find them. So I just felt that doing one blanket all the way across the board, the exemptions, the income change, and the asset limit, given the change in of inflation.
So you're gonna hit everybody that doesn't qualify with the big increase.
My only, my only fear is we drop, we drop too much weight on one side of the scale, and then you hurt the other side of the scale. So I'm saying, if we throw a little bit of weight onto the other side of the scale, see what happens, add some more next year if we can, just to make sure everything stays balanced between, yes, we need to help the elderly and disabled with an exemption, but we also need to make sure we can keep our s- lower middle class working base that we have in the town, which is our other big size of our population, elderly and our single, maybe lower income, that don't qualify for exemptions, but still own a home in the town.
Cuz the other issue is, if you, my feeling is, if you make this big jump, okay? And we have a big amount that qualify for this, so it throws, throws things off, and next year we have to put a thing on to decrease it, you can't ever decrease it, okay? Am I correct?
And you can decrease, but you're never gonna get, you're never gonna get the voters to decrease.
It won't pass, okay, it won't pass, so maybe if we increase it, as Travis says, a small amount this year, look at what, what happens, then in, make adjustments, and maybe it gives you time, you know, throw this at the eleventh hour without really a lot of, of, um.
Sorry, I got sick, but I did.
That, that, it's okay, but.
I'm tired and I'm kind of.
Yeah, so my feeling is maybe, as Travis says, small amounts this year, look at the income, look at what it does, and maybe for next year, then we do a little bit better in adjusting what the, um, assets, the income from the assets, however, instead of including every bit of asset, maybe, you know, um, fine tuning that, I guess, is my two cents.
Pulling out some of the financials, this and those income, stuff like that.
Right, right, right.
At first glance, just looking at this and not really having time to think about it, I think your income, per recommended, seem fine. The, increasing it to the thirty five and the fifty, the asset seems acceptable. I would almost say do the exemptions, what we have, just bump it up, so instead of sixty five for bracket A, you do eighty in bracket B, you do the one twenty five, and maybe it could be one fifty for the C bracket, so that your, that's your minimal, you know, increase to see, was it enough? And then next year, if House Bill one oh one does pass, you want to do that, that gives you more flexibility to, and it looks like it's, you know, grants an exemption up to five thirty, so you have flexibility to, but I don't know how.
So even, yeah, even like you just said, like, that, that's what I first was thinking, is as a small step. If we wanna do the income, we can do the income and the asset limits, and then, like I said, maybe possibly mirror Barnstead, I mean, the Gillington on their exemption amounts, which is eighty, one hundred, one twenty, which is a little bit less than what you just said for the one fifty and stuff like that, but I, I'm just, like I said, I'm worried that we drop too much on the scale on one side, and then we blow apart the other portion of our population. Like, I'm not worried about the multi-million dollar homes we have on the beachfront that just got built.
Well, be careful, you can get so.
Ah, that's great, they can bring it for, I don't care. Colleen's hands up.
So the exemptions go, what Travis is saying, the sixty five to seventy four go from sixty five to eighty?
Yeah.
The age seventy five to seventy nine go from eighty to one hundred?
Yeah.
Then the eh, then age eighty plus go to one twenty?
We can leave it at one twenty five, it's at one twenty five now.
Or just leave, oh, it's at one twenty five, just leave it at one twenty five, got it. And that at least pulls up some changes a little bit.
Pulls more people into the pool, and it raises some of the exemptions.
And then some of the income does increase, to me, that makes a little, I'm just, again, it's that unknown. We don't know, we have no idea who's gonna qualify, correct?
Right, so that would be one of the considerations is making, you know, a significant change. You don't know how many people that never qualified or never.
Are now going to, right.
I mean, we could get hundreds of people that, you know, we don't know about that are going to qualify and apply for this, which is not a bad thing, because we wanna help people, obviously, but we need to be able to.
It's a balancing thing, right.
To try to balance it. The other thing is that, you know, if for some reason there is a downturn in the real estate market, which, I mean, who knows, we never expected to see things this high, they could come way down again, then you, you know, by increasing by a large amount what the exemption value is, without knowing what's gonna happen to the market, I think, you know, a smaller, you know, and maybe this is something that gets looked at every year now, because there are such changes in the market.
But sat earlier in the year, so we can do a little bit more research and have better idea, and obviously, we'll know from what Colleen gets or receives what happens.
And the other thought I just had is like, like, everyone knows, obviously, I rent here. My rent is based off what my ba- my landlord has to pay in bills, if his property tax skyrockets, obviously, then my rent skyrockets, which means it hurts people that rent in the town as well, not just homeowners, cuz everything is taxed that's on land here. The parks, that's gonna hurt the parks if they don't qualify.
But it's your petition, I guess, um.
Well, you could support it or not now, and I can work it up and do it.
Right.
Well, what's, what's Sharon, what's your thoughts on what I just said, for raising, keeping your recommendations of the assets, the income, and hit, kind of mirroring, mir- mirroring Gillington on theirs besides our age eighty? Keeping it what we have.
Eighty, one hundred, one twenty five.
And what would happen with the disability?
Yeah, yeah.
Questions.
Cuz she's saying the same as the elderly in the bracket of sixty five to seventy four.
Now, what's the only difference between disability and elderly, is it the asset limit and income limit, or is it the exemption limits are different too?
Exemption.
Yeah, and the law says that once someone turns sixty five, they have to be moved over to the elderly. You you can only receive the disability exemption up until you turn sixty five.
Okay.
So you're saying now to increase it to seventy four, is that what you're saying?
No.
No, that's the law, we can't do it that.
No, I was asking, Sharon's recommendation was to make it be the same as the sixty five to seventy four elderly.
So it go from fifty to eighty, right, or is it fifty?
Uh, fifty.
It's fifty?
So it go from fifty to eighty.
To eighty? I don't have a, that's for sure. I don't have an issue with that.
And then what that one, the other one, the, the asset limit was different, for like what we have currently, um, the asset limit for the elderly is a hundred and fifty thousand, and for the disability, it's a hundred thousand. So it was a fifty thousand, and I just thought it would be easier if it was one flat across the board. I found numerous towns, um, at least thirty of them, in the ones that I was looking at doing my research, that had the, their income and their asset limits were the same all the way across the board, and I thought that would just be easier to do that way.
I wonder how much, how many people that will pull into the disability pool, it's gonna, we'll, we'll find out, but.
It's, it's hard, because we don't know, we don't know.
I mean, also you have to take into consideration too with that, this is also something that you can fill out an application, but people have to apply for it every five years, right? So there are people that will come on to it, um, there are people that will come off it, you know, for various reasons. So it's always going to be a fluid thing, you know, and make them a working thing and do them as we do the reevaluations in town. If the numbers go up, then these go up, if the numbers go down, then these go down.
But the voters have to vote it, to go down, and that's the hard part.
But the voters have to vote this, so no one's gonna vote.
So you know, you have to pop it, so you can put it.
No, it's just, I know, it's, it's easy, it's harder to get people to agree to move an exemption down, even if the market was to fall apart next year, it's hard to get people to agree to pay more money. And we noticed that with the budget, it's hard.
I mean, you're gonna have, you're gonna have your elderly people, they're gonna vote to reduce what their exemptions are? That's, they're not gonna vote for that, that's not gonna, you know, so that's why you have to kind of.
Slowly.
Slowly, I agree with that.
So the income and asset limits would be the thirty five, the fifty, and the two hundred, is that right?
Correct.
I just wanna make sure I got this right, okay?
Well, that's what we would support, okay, and.
Yeah. And if she doesn't.
If Sharon chooses to put this on the ballot as is and get her signatures, that's her choice. Um, but if she's looking for the board's, um, support, this is kind of what we're discussing that we would support. And I think our biggest concern is the unknown, you know, we just don't know, and the burden that it could fall on, you know.
And definitely agree with Sharon, that we do have to make some changes to it, for sure. I just wanna make sure we balance it correctly.
Okay, so I'm busy for the rest of the day today, if you want us to do it in the next twenty four hours, and then either I'll reach out to you, or you can reach out to me, or you can write me an email.
I would say that the board needs to decide today if we're supporting this, and if not, you have seven days to do your petition.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, right, unfortunately, and we've got budget.
And then.
Meeting tonight, so it's like.
And they've agreed to this, so if it, I guess it's really up to you, do you agree with their amendment or no? And if not, then you would just do a petition.
I still think the amendment's a lo- a little too low.
Okay.
I mean, I'm willing to adjust them one way, but the, I still think they're a little too low.
Okay, then I guess you do your petition and and move forward with it?
What's your thoughts of putting in, under a warrant, what we just said, though, and letting, even if she petitions it, then they'll be just too different.
We can still put our own, we can still say that the board does not support.
No, no, I'm saying, what happens, what happens if we do a warrant with our numbers, and then even with, if she put the petition in, her petition will be on there too, but we would have a warrant with our numbers and seeing what happens on the vote.
But then what if they both pass?
Well, then the higher.
Then, then a T, M, E, M, I, M, O, yeah, yeah.
I think it'd be the higher one that supersedes anyways. So I do, I do think we could get the base of voters to support. I don't know how many voters will support the higher numbers, it would be sides. Oh, sometimes people show up, so, but I do make a change this coming year. I think a majority of voters would support changing it to what we just said. I'm worried that if her numbers are too high, it gets shot down, then there's no change that's made this year, and it's just gonna hurt.
Right.
Again.
Right.
That's my thought.
Alright, so give me, give me one second to think things through, cuz I kind of lost my place. So Travis's recommendation was to change it from the one twenty five to eighty, right?
Yeah.
And then the one seventy five down to what?
A hundred. And then keeping the one twenty five the same.
And the elderly would be eighty, number five? I, I'm sorry.
Disabled, just mirror, mirror what we, mirror what we just talked about for elderly.
Disabled, is that eighty?
I think it's, again, they, they do need to change these numbers, it's just balancing it correctly is the hard part.
Right. And I understand what Travis is saying, is if it goes too high, um.
If the voters shoot her warrant down, we can't make any changes at all.
Right, then they have nothing, right, right. And it's not that we don't agree that there should be some changes, we're just not agreeing, um, with.
Exemption amount, basically just the exemption amount is what we're trying to balance out for now.
The exemption amount.
I mean, again, like I said, we can revisit next year and bring it up if we need to again, it's just, I don't wanna overload. I mean, again, like I said, we can revisit next year and bring it up if we need to again, it's just I don't wanna overload the lower part of our tax base that don't qualify for this but are in the lower income brackets.
Well, I don't, not knowing.
My problem is, is I don't think, um, the eighty plus should stay at one twenty-five, that, I think it needs to change.
So if we, I would be even okay with bumping up to one fifty, I'm not saying not to move it all, I just don't, I think bumping up a hundred thousand dollars is gonna put a big burden down, downshifting it.
You could go like to one fifty.
Yeah, even one fifty.
One fifty, and that would be.
I'd be okay with even one fifty.
To what the other ones would be?
I just like, I like seeing small increments first to see how it's gonna impact, like I said, the low income that don't qualify, that still have to pay their tax bill.
So eighty, one hundred, and one fifty?
Eighty, one hundred, one fifty, yeah, I'd be o- even okay with that.
Oh, the eight, eighty plus to one fifty?
Yeah.
And then the disability.
Would just mirror the elderly. And bringing theirs up to, what's their, what's their exemption right now, the, uh, disability?
Fifty.
Fifty.
So you go up to sixty, yeah, the eighty, that's, that's, I understand that.
That's not. And then what really should happen is, in the next year, to look at, um...
I would keep track.
Yeah.
The guideline, right, right, right.
You know, we'd see who was new, we'd see who got changes, like I'd have to keep a.
Right, and then obviously, you're still gonna have those that might miss it a little bit, but if it's changed, then they may qualify, kind of thing, so that you, we would have a better idea of, um, you're still not gonna know exactly, but you might get a better idea of.
How many people would come into the board.
Right, I mean, and maybe I should get more information from people that come in, you know, we give them, you know, the information says, hey, your income has to be this, your assets have to be this, and I have people say, oh, well, then I just, I don't qualify at all, and they leave. But maybe we get information from them, you know, are, are they close to those?
Right.
Or are they way out of the ball?
And let them know that, we're trying to gather information so we can adjust the exemption appropriately to encompass the pool that's gonna need the assistance, but still be able to balance out the finances of the town with it.
Okay, let's do it.
Are you good with that?
Yeah.
Alright, I'll make.
Eighty, one hundred, one fifty, eighty.
And I'll second that with the changes.
Yep.
On my favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
I have it printed with signature lines, waiting.
Hey Sharon, you wanna vote yes or no?
Yes.
Thank you.
You can have that. No opposition? Okay? Get that figured out?
Yeah.
Alright, um, any other new business?
No.
No, okay, on to old business, um, twenty twenty-four default budget updates.
I added in the numbers from this week's AP and payroll, and we are at ninety-four percent of a hundred percent. Obviously, it's now twenty twenty-five, but we still have some last minute expenditures that are coming through, so it's still under the twenty-four defaults.
Okay, alright, that's a good thing.
And I, I know, and I, again, the town should know that we're under, yes, we're under the default, but we did sacrifice the town doing some services and some other community activities that we do, and, yeah, it did work this year, it's not gonna keep working that way.
Right, there was a lot of departments that sacrificed spending and buying and upgrading and maintaining, just so that they could help other departments who were over by.
Which just kicks the can down the road to next year.
Absolutely.
And it's gonna be more expensive, unfortunately. Um, twenty twenty-five budget updates and changes.
Uh, I don't have any, um, oh, I've provided you, um, with, with the draft of what I've submitted to, um, DRA, and that will be presented, um, tonight at the public hearing with the budget committee, that is our, I think, my book on, um, our draft default, and then the draft MS seven thirty-seven, which encompasses the, um, the budget, the separate warrant articles, the revenue, um, I think it's under our last page of the seven thirty-seven, it's kind of breaks it down. I did not bring myself a copy, so if you feel the need to.
Wanna borrow, wanna borrow mine?
Or any of that, um...
What is the number?
The other one, bottom, I think the bottom page might play out, so. If anyone wants to hear or be present of the public hearing for the budget, it's tonight at six thirty.
So on the back, oh, yeah, the seven thirty-seven, yeah.
Yep.
So is that?
This is what, this is what the selectmen recommend?
No, no, so is this the number that will be on the ballot?
The eleven, the top one, the eleven.
And the default is, okay, okay, that's, that's even better than I thought it. It's closer than I thought they would be.
So.
This is final?
I think the only change.
No, cause the default's ten eight, and our budget's eleven three.
Right.
So it's not, I thought it was a two million dollar separation, it's not even that.
So your problem, the eleven, three ninety-five, zero eight six is the operating budget, so that will be, you know, what you're operating, and then your default is the.
And eight.
Ten eight.
Yes, it's closer than I thought they were, I thought it was a two million split, it's not even that.
Then your separate warrant articles are all of your, um, starting on page seven, all of your, um, capital reserve funds, all of your articles for the, from the fire department for their leases, then, um, that they have, and then so that, that is a total of three million, three hundred eighty-one, seven ninety-five, and then you have your individual warrant articles, which is the, um, PD union contract, the articles, you hire the two firefighters, and then a highway block grant, which that equals five hundred thirty-six thousand, four eighty-two, with a total appropriation of all of those separate articles, the operating, uh, fifteen million, three hundred thirteen thousand, three hundred sixty-three, minus your estimated revenues of five point seven million. You'd be raising, estimated to raise and appropriate nine point five million for taxation.
Yeah, I'm just happy that you see the budgets are closer than the default budget.
The revenues due one more time for the tax rate setting and that next, uh, form. And as of right now, now that I have this new article, I think we're at thirty-two warrant articles.
Not bad. Better bring your reading glasses.
And obviously, we'll put out the voter's guide everywhere that we can find.
Can I ask one more question? Can we put the, um, town employee salaries back into the town report, please? It is public knowledge and public money, and the public should be able to open the book, just like they always have and found those numbers.
I'd be okay with it.
My recommendation would be no, but you can certainly, you need, put a motion on the table and take a vote, and.
Bye. Okay.
I'd be okay with it, it's public knowledge anyways, they can ninety-one A if they wanted to, might as well, no.
You mean it saves the ninety-one As?
It's, it's public knowledge.
Yeah.
Yep.
It's supposed to be public knowledge, I mean, I called the, I called Debbie Thompson, or I emailed Debbie Thompson of the school every year right after election day, and say, can you please send me a list of the salaries of the, um, school employees, and she emails me the spreadsheet within forty-eight hours of me asking her, so I think they should go back in the town report, so I would make a motion to put the employee salaries back into the town report.
I mean, I, I have, and I have no issue justifying everyone's salary, I can easily, like, like, people may see the numbers and think they're extremely high, but the amount of work that the people do in those departments, I could justify it, so I have no issues letting people come to me and question me.
So you're gonna second that?
Yes, I'm gonna.
Okay, on my favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, other old business.
Uh, I just wanted to let you know, if you didn't see in the paper, there was a really nice article written up, um, on the truck that we purchased with the grant funds, if everyone didn't see it, I know previously they were de-commissioning the old truck, um...
As we speak.
As we speak, so.
Blowing a hole in it.
Right through the block.
Late, uh, article that was here.
And what happens to it then?
Scraped it.
Okay.
I'm gonna sell the body.
Yeah.
I'm gonna sell parts that we can sell off at a auction.
Yeah? And we can do that?
Yeah.
And we can retain those funds, whatever it is.
Yeah, if you need an earmark, come to us, if you need, if you need an earmark, come to us.
No, we, no, but, so the body on, it's got an offer of the body on it, and it's one that we replaced years ago, so it's not in great shape, it's not bad shape, so we should be able to get some value out of that, um, and whatever else we can get value out of, we're gonna, we're gonna try to.
Thank you.
And then, um, DES is great, um, they were up there, two people from, um, the grant writers and me, but grant people from DES were there, they were really good, and they were, they were super supportive of us, like putting that in the paper, they were, they were really, they were really happy with everything.
Can you apply for another one? Because we have another old truck, so to speak, correct?
There, each and every year, there are different opportunities that you have to like research, so.
Okay.
There's different criteria, they're making the criteria higher every year.
Oh, of course.
But, so, well, like I said, we're always looking, and we're, we're continuing to look, and, um, you know.
Good.
I've actually got calls from like four other towns, like, how did you do that?
Yeah, yeah, I bet, yeah, yeah, awesome, alright, no, great job, good article.
Thank you.
Um, and the other new, uh, old business that I have is, uh, one of our, um, prior meetings, um, Patrick had come forward, um, we did our annual, um, backflow testing, and we did have, um, two areas that needed to be repaired. There is a repair that needs to be done at the highway garage.
No, fire department.
Fire department, well, this one says garage.
And the mill.
And the mill, uh, this one says garage, so there's a nine hundred and sixty dollar, uh, repair that needs to be done on, at the fire department, and a three thousand five hundred and sixty-five dollar repair that needs to be done at the mill. The fire department, they can probably take that out of their, um, building budget. The mill one, I would have to check to see what we have for the twenty-five budget, but if not, then I would come forward or request it now that it be taken out of the municipal facilities, capital reserve funds.
Okay, alright. So they're just backflow preventers that are not working?
Right, they did pass the pressure test, they, they are original when they, like, the one here, put it back in ninety-seven.
Sure.
Alright, they just, they've all lived their life.
Yep.
Uh, they're tested twice a year, uh, when this test came around, they did, they did not pass. There is a backup, so we're not, you know, that's why we held off, uh, but we, we need to get it done.
Okay, alright, Deb?
This is all in line with our water department rules and regulations, so we test, we test ours just as other commercial, we require other commercial businesses in town.
Sure.
At a high risk, um, so we fall in that line, so they, they, it's, they.
And they pay for that if it's there, cause it typically water backflows or?
If they fail, they pay their own bill.
Okay, alright, Deb?
Required, it's part of the, it's part of the rules and regulations, it's part of their commitment to getting water.
Yep, okay.
Um, I don't know if it makes a difference, but on the line that, that has the back, wherever the part is.
Backflow preventer, water line.
Whatever line, it is the line that, for instance, um, when you guys are flushing out your, um, whatever.
Hydrants?
They, not the hydrants, whatever you guys flush out there, correct, um, and they come pick up, they put all the water into their tanks, that's the line they use, so it's, it's one of the, I guess it's more of a town necessarily, a fire department line, because we have, we have two, two lines on our station.
Well, fire department, town.
No, I understand, I guess I'll just.
Same thing.
I guess I'll just.
Fire, budget, building budget.
Crossed the doing business, I guess.
Yeah, I'll just make it a statement.
Yep, alright, okay, alright. Um, any, yes?
Just wanna let you know that we did order the generator for this building, uh, installation scheduled for June.
Well, I guess, June, so we should have, should we take tests, June, it ought to be online by September, right? Hopefully not, I always like to make.
Let's hope it's quicker than the elevator.
And actually, speaking of the elevator, as I was riding up in the elevator, how often does that have to be inspected?
Uh, at least once a year.
Okay, because I noticed, riding up in the elevator, the little date is, is January twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four, so I guess it's gotta be tested again.
I'm gonna.
Okay. Oh, that's what you do when you ride up in the elevator, check the dates, I guess.
You don't wanna read some of them, you don't wanna read some of them.
Huh? No, well, they look better than what they were, that's for sure. Okay, any public comments? None, okay, our next meeting is scheduled for January twenty-second, which I assume is a Wednesday. And just to not, just, obviously, the meeting was held on Tuesday because we needed to get this stuff prepared for tonight's budget public hearing. That's why we have a, had a Tuesday meeting just to throw everybody off, it wasn't something we did out of the.
Cause it was a holiday, so.
Yeah, and, oh, yeah, the two, the two-week holiday that if you're like me, if everybody's like me, I didn't know what day I was at, so.
It's gonna throw me off the rest of the week, cause I keep thinking today's Wednesday, cause I'm here.
Do you just have a non-public?
Oh, we do, okay, non-public, uh, ninety-one dash A colon three, Roman numeral two, letter?
B.
C, C is in Charlie.
Yeah.
Roll call.
Travis O'Hara, second.
For the motion, sure, thank you, everyone.
No, we're all.
We all roll called, whatever happens, happens.